Good morning. It is 9:00 AM on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, and I call this regularly scheduled business meeting of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners to order. For the record, I am Chairman Luke Ommitt, and Commissioners Asia Williams and Steve Bradshaw are also present. Please rise for our invocation with Ms. Charlene Wright.
As always, Lord, we invite your presence here, and we ask for the Spirit of wisdom, Spirit of understanding, counsel, strength, knowledge, discernment, and the fear of the Lord. And Father, we ask for your plan and your plans only, and your heart for Bonner County. Give us your heart's desire. Thank you that you have a plan and purpose. And Lord, we ask that you would drop the plum line in this place, that it would be the plum line, that everything would line up under that. I pray, God, that, and just thank you that you are the giver of everything that we have here, comes from you, and so we acknowledge you in that. We pray that you'd search our hearts, every one of us, God, all up and down Idaho, God, but especially in Bonner County, that there'd be no bitterness or selfish ambition in any heart here, that we would be quick to hear, that we would not only hear, listen, but we would hear, and that there would be honor in one another, honoring one another. And I pray, Father, that we would be quick to hear and slow to speak and slow to become angry. And I pray for the Spirit of reconciliation in all of North Idaho and Bonner County to be released in Jesus' name, that everything, the wisdom from above, Lord, you said is pure, peaceable, gentle, reasonable, and full of mercy. And we just ask for this, God, to be released. Father, beginning in the homes, in the marriages, that Spirit of reconciliation, that forgiveness would be released, humility to ask forgiveness where we need to ask forgiveness. And God, we ask that, when we just say, say thank you, that you are the God of reconciliation, and we pray these things in the mighty, powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agendized item is to adopt the Order of Agenda.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the Order of Agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Our next item is the Consent Agenda.
I move to approve payment of FY '24, or I moved, missing that page. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 The motion carries. Our next agendized item is with Clerk Rosedale.
Good morning, everybody. Before you, I have Fiscal Year 24 Claims Batch Number 18 in the amount of $1,294,746 for your approval.
I move to approve payment of FY '24 claims and batch number 18 totaling $1,294,746.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next, I have EMS Fiscal Year 24 Claims Batch Number 18 totaling $50,550.91 for your approval.
I move to approve payment of FY '24 EMS Claims in Batch 18 totaling $50,550.91.
Seconded out.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rosedale. Our next agendized item is with Nick Zoller of Emergency Management.
Good morning. Nick Zoller, Fire Mitigation Program Manager, for the record. Today, I have one agenda item. This memorandum of understanding between Bonner County and the Idaho Department of Lands is for a grant award in the amount of $240,000 for hazardous fuels treatment associated with the bonfire program. The funds identified will be used for Sagal South Phase III project. Grant match of $24,000 is accomplished by landowner contributions and private corporate funds.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move the county approved memorandum of understanding, grant number 23 WFM Bonner in the amount of $240,000, and allow the chair to sign.
I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Zoller. Our next agendized item is HR with Ms. Alyssa Clark, Alicia Clark, excuse me.
Good morning, Alicia Clark, HR for the record. Bonner County Justice Services Department has a juvenile probation officer retiring in October, and due to the increase of the adult caseload, they'd like to convert that juvenile detention position into another adult probation, excuse me.
Oh, I did.
Probation officer position.
Can I pause you for a second?
Sure.
You're not up next.
If it's okay with the board, I'll do Roden Bridge after we let Ms. Clark finish. I apologize, Mr. Top. It says, Mr. Mulder, you are Mr. Mulder. Please continue.
Okay. Due to the increase in adult caseload, they'd like to convert the juvenile probation officer position into another adult probation officer position in October of '24.
Does that leave you needing another juvenile probation?
So right now, it won't. Just right now, the caseloads are pretty disproportionate. We're really heavy on adult probation clients coming in, and we're averaging about 20, 25 new cases per month coming in for adult misdemeanor where we're averaging less than that for juvenile. So for right now, we'll be perfectly fine. I'm still also certified as a juvenile probation officer, so I can also take up some of that slack if we get like a wave of cases that come through. I can assist with that.
As we move to our next budget, should we kind of have an understanding that this move is a temporary, and you will potentially need a juvenile to replace that?
We will in the future, for sure. But one thing that we can look at too, some of the Juvenile Corrections Act funds that we receive from the state, as well as some of the tobacco tax funds can be used for salaries. So it might be a way that we can, when that time comes, we can incrementally bring that person into the old pool. We can use some of those state funds to start with, take that salary, maybe 50, 50, and then kind of slowly.
Okay. I just don't want the board to think this is not something that's needed. It's just something that currently this shift fits what you're using.
Right. Right now, the bigger need is to have that additional.
Okay. Thank you. Based on the information before us, I move to approve, commencing with approval of the county converting the juvenile probation officer position into an adult probation officer position effective October 2024.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries. Now going backwards to Mr. Jason Top. Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Top, Director of Roden Bridge for the record. What I have for you this morning is advertisement for bids for the Dufer Culvert at Moore Creek. Roden Bridge is seeking approval to advertise for bids for the Dufer Culvert at Moore Creek project. This project seeks to replace a 60-inch culvert under the Dufer Road at Moore Creek, which is in the 5300 block just east of the intersection with Lake Shore. This is about the same era of culvert as the big one that failed out on Dufer Road, and we're gonna look to replace it during low water in November, which would be significantly cheaper than the other ones. It would be a planned event, and we don't have to do a culvert down. So traffic would then be detoured down Lake Shore Drive during this project if it's awarded. We're hoping that it would only be about a three-week project.
I move to approve this notice of advertisements for the Dufer Road Culvert at Moore Creek project.
I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. And now, getting back to our agenda, the District Two Commissioner discussion.
All righty. First topic is Camp Bay Road Vacation. So, oh, thank you to Louis Marshall for giving me the information to review. And so the finding, the request here has been a temporary trail until the trail is completed. And so Recital B, and I'm gonna read it from the document and hand it to Fred if you want this document, subsection B reserves access during construction only to Bonner County staff. And so when I read the document itself, it says during the period associated with construction of the trail, an easement is hereby provided only to the authorized staff of Bonner County. Idaho identified herein for the purposes of inspection and confirmation of trail construction. Upon completion of construction of the trail, accordance with the vacation approval and this declaration, the actual location of the trail within tract A shall be legally described, and at such time, an easement shall be dedicated to Bonner County for use by the public, the permanent easement, on the terms and condition to further herein. And so with respect to temporary, the response from the developer is, we have 12 months after the vacation approval, including all appeals to complete the trail, see Section 4, which puts this in February 2025. And so when I go to the document from the finding to confirm that that is accurate, it says, "Construction timing, the trail shall be constructed within 12 months of the vacation approval and running of all appeals." And so with that, the decision is accurate in line with what their argument is, is that the trail completion is required by February 2025, and they're not required to give temporary access before construction because the document specifically says construction phase is only for Bonner County staff. So I'm gonna hand these over to the people that wanted this. For me, there isn't anything else I can do other than this document, which was in line with the answer that the developer gave. And Louis Marshall did ask, can they do a temporary trail? And the answer is February 2025. In accordance with that finding, they will have that trail ready per the requirement from the state. Commissioner Chat lineup. Next week is the review of House Bill 608. This bill was sponsored by Rep. Andrus and Farm Bureau. Rep. Andrus is going to be available for this discussion, as well as a Farm Bureau Representative, Braden Jensen. There's a need to fully understand what this actual House bill did. For those of you who aren't aware, it addresses ag land, rural land in our area. Does it make sense to put it in some kind of account? It looks to appear that it might conflict with some other areas that we already have, but there's a need to fully understand it. So Rep. Andrus was willing to have that discussion. So I encourage people to review it so that we can bring good questions forward, because the other thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask for a representative who disagreed with this bill, so that we have a balanced understanding of is this reasonable and appropriate for people to use. This came up in our community because we were looking at a potential imminent domain issue with a member of our community. So I continued to look at this, even though it wasn't really a commissioner issue, it's a community issue. This came out as a possible solution, but it might not necessarily be the solution that's desired, because it might conflict with what we already can do. So I encourage people to be available. Rep. Andrus and Farm Bureau will be on Zoom, so if you guys can email questions so that it's a little bit smoother. He's not in our area, obviously. And then the next one will be for someone that doesn't agree with the request of Farm Bureau. I did, next Commissioner Chat is just with me to kind of go over what chats will look like. I was trying to avoid chats in the month of July, but I'm going to give a chat to Better Together Animal Alliance, because they want to explain to the community what it is that they offer, especially as we're coming into budget area. It's not just a shelter to go and adopt dogs. They actually provide a lot of services to Bonner County pet owners to include, if you can't afford dog food, you can go there and grab what you need dog food-wise. They help with dog training. They do a lot of services in the community, and those needs have increased. For those of you who are aware of what's happened in our community, Blanchard was an area where over 20 huskies were just let go. That required not just people, but it also put weight onto that particular center. There were charges brought against the individual. The person was ordered restitution of over $23,000, but they appealed, and they won the appeal. So there was nothing paid to that center for, they literally examined every single animal, they vaccinated, they spayed, they did all of those things for the act of one individual, and that money wasn't recovered for our community. So it's important to kind of know how something like that bridges the gap in our community, especially as we're coming into budgets, to understand why they have a need. The issue, there was an issue brought to my attention regarding water and those who rely on free water service at the fair. I will be meeting with the fair. The issue has been fixed, but the long-term solution of how do we make sure that the entire county or the entire city are not responsible for that water bill has to be addressed. What happened was the water ability broke, caused damage, and then people started saying, who's supposed to pay this bill? Sandpoint was paying over $8,000 for the bill, but the people using the service were not paying. So I'm gonna work with them to see what should, could we do to address that issue. I'm going to skip decisions made that you may not have heard about, because I have requested legal to indicate if they're going to issue a statement regarding some changes. I haven't received a response as to whether or not they'll make that statement, so I'm gonna skip that on this review. Albany Dam. It was requested that we maintain communication with the issue related to Albany Dam. And so I did post out the slides from the presentation that took place on the 31st. There are two upcoming discussions. The 24th is at Priest River Event Center from 1:00 to 3:00. The 25th will be at Pondurea Event Center from 5:00 PM to 7:30. They did answer questions that were asked. They're not going to hold another question and answer session in this setting. I did ask for that. But they are actually answering questions that people are posting. So if you guys have questions regarding the dam, as well as people have brought the concern that last year they pulled the gate up, did they find the damage at that time, and we waited, those questions go to Army Corps. That's not my wheelhouse. I'm just the conduit of information on that. So you guys can take that and pass that around. They also are doing very good detailed news releases on what's going on with the dam. As a lot of people have heard, it's going to be costly, and it's going to take time. It's not going to get fixed significantly in probably the next two, three years, but people want to know about water level. A lot of people have asked me about property taxes. Your property is still in front of water. I don't think that's gonna change, just because the water's a little lower. So you guys can take that and visit their website or my site, and you can actually review the slides. The slides were very informative from the Corps of Engineers. The next thing I said I would talk about was West Bonner County School District, Bonner County. We don't, as Commissioners, we have nothing to do with school district. However, I do go and visit, because a lot of people have said they want to know what's happening. So with respect to West Bonner County School District, the junior high school building is going to close, but those students are going to move into the high school. There's going to be intentional separation such that on one end of the hall will be Seventh and Eighth. There'll be a little bit of co-mingling around the art class, just because that has a kiln, and they're not going to move that. It's going, there's actually benefits that come to combining those two grades together, because you'll have a full-time female PE teacher available. There'll be more, a little bit more availability in staff, and instead of having students move around as much, they're going to adopt a method that was presented by George and his team of, more of the teachers are gonna move around the students more. So they're going, they've heard the concerns of safety related to seventh graders and the top of 12th graders. They've addressed those concerns. It's not an ideal situation, perfect situation, but it is a situation that doesn't have them closing the primary schools up north, and that was the best that could be done with what the situation is. There is a high probability that on the November ballot, they will request for the levy again. There is a lot of discussion about, what is it for? Why do you need it? I encourage everybody to participate. Reach out to your trustees in that area. I did receive a request to see what, if anything, Bonner County could do. Some of their resources are limited, such as with plowing. I did reach out to our, Teddy is our person that would plow, and we don't have the ability to offer anything to the school district, but they are looking for members of community to kind of step in and bridge the gap. So if you have an ability to help with something, West Bonner County School is interested in your ability to help them. So reach out to the school district. They are doing a grant program, and so some people have heard, I've announced to some people in different settings, that I'm doing a grant consulting course. I didn't charge Bonner County for it. I'm doing it on my own, so nobody has to continue with Asia's charging the county. The reason I'm doing it is when I go through the community, a lot of people are asking me about grants, and we don't have a resource. So I want to fill the gap for that resource, for whether it be a school or a community center, because a lot of people want to know, how do we pull our money back into our area? And whether we like it or not, the current method is obtaining grants. And so that is also something that the school district is going to do. They have a search group for grants, but they also are going to open up an account so that they can accept donations to help bridge the gap of where we are running deficient. And workshops pending status, I did request that Commissioner O'Mont or Bradshaw schedule the workshop for the waterways, but they don't want to do that until a director of Parks and Rec is hired. So I don't expect to see that anytime soon, but I'll keep you posted on that. We are still working on the outside attorney contract and rate list. Any questions regarding what I reported out today? Yes. Junior High. All of the primary schools will remain open and in their places. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Our next agendized, next agendized item is public comment, and we will begin with Mr. Dave Bowman.
I'm back. So some of you may or may not know, or you may not know at all, last week on Friday.
Mr. Bowman, could I get you to state your name?
Dave Bowman. There was a hearing in District Court and had to do with my unlawful removal and trespass from this meeting several months ago, and I'll just read a couple of things out of the temporary restraining order that I was able to get against these two Commissioners in particular and the county in general. The right to attend public meetings and provide public comment implicates a First Amendment right. The denial of such right for even minimal periods of time constitutes irreparable injury. That's cited from Roman Catholic Diocese of Brooklyn via Cuomo, 2020. Bonner County is temporarily restrained and enjoined from enforcing any trespass order previously ordered, precluding petitioner David Bowman from in-person attendance at county board meetings, Board of Commissioner meetings. So there's that. This is only a temporary thing, and of course, it would be nice if the county would recognize that that should be extended, but we're probably gonna end up back in court again, because they love to cost me money. But that's okay. I see the gavel is back today. Haven't seen it here for months and months. I can't imagine why you chose today to bring it back. Actually, I can, but I'll leave that. A couple of quotes here. A few months ago, my wife quoted Samuel Adams and said, "Few men have the fortitude to tell a tyrant that they are determined to be free." I am determined to be free. Ben Franklin was asked at one point, "Do we have a republic, or do we have a monarchy?" And his answer to that was, you may have heard, "A republic if you can keep it." Well, folks, keeping a republic starts right here locally. Pay attention to what your Commissioners are doing. Keep on them, and don't just let them do what they do. If you have a problem with it, get up here and say something. It helps. The judge quoted from New York Times versus Sullivan, writing for the majority, Justice William Brennan Jr. said, "The debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. Fehiment criticism and even mistakes were part of the price a democratic society must pay for freedom." In that same decision, Justices Hugo Black, Arthur Goldberg, and William L. Douglas thought that Brennan didn't go far enough, said that he was too restrictive on free speech, that the right to discuss public affairs and to criticize government should be unconditional. I move on to Chairman O'Mott loves to quote from Title 1, well, I'm gonna let that go for now, because I see my time is about up, but I'll be back next week.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Dan Welly.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Welly. I'm a Bonner County resident. I was going to speak to you last week at the public comment section after listening to Commissioners O'Mont and Bradshaw comment on their decisions regarding the Glazow matter. And I had not intended to make a comment, but their comments just spoke out to me and said, "You have to say something." The entire incident isn't about farming. The petitioner there for the CUP can grow anything he wants. That's not an issue. The issue was how much he got to use or needed to use in his product, and he's unable to do that. That issue would be from 750 pounds to 2,000 pounds of grapes, depending on, pardon me, variety of grapes and a whole lot of other things that are concerned. He can't do that yet. The CUP is not supposed to be awarded on that basis alone. He can get it later. Nobody wants him to go without, but he can't get it now. You let him do that. You called us Marxists because we said that you let him do that. Well, you took an oath to uphold the law. You say you're a rule follower. You didn't follow the rules. You're an anarchist. Your arguments were specious and completely untoward. If you review them, you'll see they made absolutely no sense. Lastly, I'd like to welcome Dave back to the meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Welly. Is there anybody online who has requested? Okay, Mr. Kramer, Brandon?
Good morning. My name is Brandon Kramer. I'm a Bonner County resident. I have a few items. One, I'm grateful that, Dave, you're fighting for your rights, and I am not shocked by the judge's decision. Anyone with half a brain who has the reading level of a fifth grader could read the court's previous decisions and the body of evidence to understand that the decisions made by O'Mont and Bradshaw were unlawful. And I look forward to the injunction that is likely impending for you, Mr. Bowman. The other items I wanted to raise were also regarding the Glazow decision. Chairman O'Mont and Commissioner Bradshaw, your decisions there were, I understand from your perspectives, you want to try to say in support of private property rights, but in that case, we should have no, if we were to continue your decision-making process, we should have no ordinances or zoning at all in this county, because you completely disregarded everything that was there within our land use laws, and you just made an arbitrary decision. decision. And so, if you're willing to go there, I suggest to you to commit to it and go all the way there, instead of picking and choosing certain items, to make it known where you actually stand, and the county residents can be involved and engaged to either tell you that they agree or that they disagree. But to do your song and dance and pick and choose things makes it difficult for any of us to have effective neighbors. Ultimately, what the decisions that you are having and are making pit neighbors against one another unnecessarily so, because the laws we have there, we count on, and we rely on them to sort of create a fabric in which our community can operate with some common understanding. And when you usurp them without any real justification, it makes it really difficult. So, I would implore you to evaluate your decision-making processes and the impact that it has, not just for the person who is potentially making a request, either the request for the CUP or the appellant or thereof, but the secondary and tertiary consequences of the decisions that you make. And then, the last thing I wanted to raise is, the Culburn Improvement Project has been, in my opinion, the least user-friendly experience ever, and I hope that there is something that can be done with Director Howard and the rest of the Solid Waste Department to make that facility actually easier to use for those of us in the county. It seems that there were a lot of engineering drawings that were done, but no review of actual functional, practical use of that site by the residents. And I think that that's a shame, and a shameful item and a waste for the millions of dollars that were spent.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Franco.
Mike Franco, Clark Fork. I think you can hear me this week.
Yes, we can.
For the connection last week, and that I lost you. You know, it's an inconvenience. But this week, I'd just like to say that I'm going to yield my time. Everybody have a nice week.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Ms. Bowman?
Hi there, Susan Bowman. It's good to see my husband back in the audience today, and it's unfortunate that he ever was not able to be there. Our First Amendment rights are the most important, because without them, all of the other ones don't stand. And I would like to thank Asia in particular for continuing to stand up for our rights and for bringing to us those things that matter to us. And for the two of you, I hope that you have the eyes to see and the ears to hear. The voters have rejected your tyranny. So, I hope that you can spend your last months in your positions, doing what is right, and not continuing to squash our freedom of speech. That's really all I have to say, but I also just want to say one more thing. In the spirit of forgiveness, you have already been forgiven. I have already forgiven you. But forgiveness is not something that we grant, thinking that we're going to continue to be abused. Forgiveness releases me from you. That's what it does. But if you could just tell the truth to yourselves, everything else is going to fall in place for you. So, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. GM, are you there?
Yes, sorry about that. I just want to start by saying, first of all, I'm Jim Leedy. I would like to thank the Bowman's for supporting me in my First Amendment lawsuit against Bonner County Sheriff Darryl Wheeler, and I am happy that they understand how important the First Amendment is, and I appreciate that support in suing him against that tyranny of violating the First Amendment. So, thank you for that. I'd also like to ask Commissioner Williams about funding schools by grants. Is that something that can be done? I was not sure that was how public schools were funded, that they could be funded by grants, if she can clarify on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leedy.
Mr. Leedy, I said, that's something that they're looking into, so they formulated a group. And so, they do have grants that are there for certain reasons for schools?
Is there anybody else in the room that would like to offer public comment before we recess until our executive session?
Jennifer Arnn, Bonner County resident, and I wanted to refer to the Camp Bay issue...
Do you want these?
Yes, I'll take this in a sec. So, the documents that the developer is referencing are not county documents. The document that, saying that they would be done February 23rd, that document was generated by the developer stating what he was willing to do, or they were willing to do, and they do not represent a contract with the county and are not enforceable. And all we were asking for, since the road already goes right now to where they're going to make the easement, where they're going to make the beach access, if people would be able to walk down the existing road until they finish their trail, which would be reasonable since all other residents on South Camp Bay were given a temporary easement to access their properties. This, in a sense, accessing the lake would be Bonner County residents accessing their property, the lake. And it seems completely reasonable that the county could come up with an agreement, not the developer's statement of what they are going to do, but it would be a goodwill gesture on everybody's part to negotiate that for the citizens of Bonner County.
Okay.
I spoke with Louis Marshall Wednesday, I was over at his office, and that was one of the things we discussed. The way that is wrote, according to him, is it is still private property until that completion date, and you would be at risk of trespassing up to that point, and until that point, there is absolutely nothing the county can do about it, until February the date.
Right, but the document that he's referencing is an instrument number where the developer said, "This is what we're going to do."
Yeah.
And that was not what the...
The public access would become effective on that February date.
Right, but there's nothing...
Until then, a person would risk trespassing.
Exactly, exactly, but there's nothing that...
And there's nothing we can do about it, nothing Louis Marshall can do about it till that date. So, that's where we're at.
Is it two ends, two ends, Mrs. Arnn?
No, one.
One, oh, Arnn.
In the last name, Arnn.
Well, I figured there's two ends in Jennifer.
Well, you never know.
All right. Ms. Gunter?
Monica Gunter, for the record. I just want to, I think everybody here probably knows that the east route through Sagal has been certifiably canceled, that they won't be going through that area, and I just want to say thank you so much to Asia for her work on that. You know, everybody said it was an ITD problem. ITD, ITD, got to contact ITD. Well, it is, but Asia stepped up as a Commissioner and supported us. Now, what my question is, yes, it's an ITD problem, but we need a light at Dufer Road. We're going to save lives if we just put a stoplight at Dufer Road, many lives. Mark my word on that, it's getting worse and worse and worse by the day. We need a light, we need your support to get that light, because it's affecting a lot of people.
Thank you.
Definitely need the light.
Faders. Anyone else?
So, Monica, with the light comment. So, I actually reached out on a light on that spot, as well as the Spirit Lake cutoff that goes to 41, because that's an anticipated concern in that community on both those ends, so I'll add that topic as a continue-to-update topic, because I did request that, because that was what Road and Bridge had actually also said could be done.
Yep.
All right. It's 9:39, and this meeting is recessed until 11:00 for our scheduled exec...